I borrowed your car. Yeah, to make some space for the...
Is it?
The... Because the roof was bigger than the previous one.
Yeah.
I don't know. It's not as ordinary as I think it should be. It's not as...
Well, I put that turbo on and now it's giving me a EGR code and I don't even have an EGR. I took it off.
So are you gonna have to reprogram it?
I did. I did everything.
Yeah, you've learned the way that EGRs are off. Cause there's sometimes short or not short, but do you have the blocks on there where the EGR about was?
Mm-hmm.
There's something wrong with that. Do you have to have the blocks?
Yeah, all my sensors are unplugged.
Check your wiring.
Hey, thank you so much. I was just like, man.
I hadn't been here in a while.
It's driving me nuts. So how big is that? Have you been up there at the Grand Road?
No, I was in Meridian yesterday when I... So once you go past Bosque Valley Golf Court?
Right, dude, they had it stopped.
They had it stopped today. Uh, they had it stopped and... They didn't stay with... Let's just say how you follow the move when it comes down. No, it went up the side of the hill and I mean, it got hot enough to where it burned cedar trees from here.
So that's what happened whenever the fog dropped there. Uh, it was on the lullions and it came down to us and it went down into like canyon and the backdrop kept... The flames just kept coming out.
Yeah, so that's... Yeah, awesome. Uh, that one up there is 4,000 acres now.
Yeah, and like 30% contained now.
Is it 30 now?
Uh, that's...
That's weird how they do the containment on those because, you know, you can see it's not going anywhere and they'll call it, you know, 10% contain on that little forest stump. Forest services. I didn't have no flying chest or anything and they only had one dozen. And Paul put them out there.
Well, we were coming back from the coast and north or southbound on 35, this car was pulled over and you could just see flames coming up on the garbage on the side. In the access road and interstate. Yeah, I was like, man, this is gonna get bad because it was, the wind was blowing from the south. It's always gonna push the flames all the way up.
Well, did you see how they laid that car over yesterday? So train car was a load of coke on there?
Right.
And it's just coke all it is. It's just the, um, the last bit of refining dirty oil. And it was just burning right up in there. They laid that something over, but look at that.
How did it start?
It just from pressure in there.
Really?
Yeah, if you look here, you can see where they're hot. And all of them are like that. They say that that don't start by itself, but they said that the coal that might have been in there before is what caused it. I was on that till. Five, six? Five or six? And then I went out there. Testing, one, two, three.
In accordance with Texas government code section 551.043A, notice is hereby given that a call meeting in the governing body of the city of Valley Mills, Texas will be held on Tuesday, July 19th, 2022 at 6:00 PM at City of Valley Mills Council Chambers 101 West Avenue E. Valley Mills, Texas, and was duly hosted on Friday, July 15th, 2022 at approximately 6:00 PM. They're about providing the required 102-hour non-7 P. So swear to God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation, under God, one and indivisible.
Father, we do give thanks. We thank you for this time. We thank you for this business tonight. Father, we pray that you would conduct it in honor and glory of the kingdom. Father, we pray tonight that as we make decisions, that their decisions may then would best represent our community. And Father, we just give you praise. We thank you for our Savior, Jesus Christ.
Amen.
A pen?
Yeah, we've got some right here.
You want that one? You want that one?
Staff, Mr. Corum, Mayor Pro Tem, Ray Bakerstaff?
Here.
Councilman Chris Hillen?
Here.
Councilman Nick Hillen? I mean, Councilman Nick Barron, I'm sorry.
He got jokes.
Councilman Sam Slaver?
Here.
Councilman Craig Doggett?
Here.
Our citizen comments. Anyone wishing to speak will be afforded the opportunity. You must sign in 10 minutes prior to the start of the council meeting. A three-minute time limit will be imposed. Such matter is not debatable and cannot be commented on by council except to ask clarifying questions. So, Mario?
Couple things first. Everybody out there was voted into, into office to serve a certain God, city councilman and the mayor, correct? Okay, that being said, what exactly has the mayor done or not done that has brought this, this new ordinance issue up again and again? The ordinance for the hiring and firing limitations. Does local government code or state law say anything about hiring and firing authority of the mayor of a type A general law city like Valley Mills? Does the proposed ordinance, which has not been made public, conflict with local government code or state law? What does the Texas municipal league say about the hiring and firing authority of the mayor of a type A general law city like Valley Mills? Does the council have a written opinion from the city attorney that, that proposed ordinance limiting the hiring and firing authority of the mayor is legal and does not conflict with state law? If not, why not? Does the proposed ordinance conflict with any other city ordinance or the city's code of ethics governing the conduct and authority of a council or mayor? What are the specific reasons for considering this ordinance? And not the whole, you know, oh, we just wanna have oversight or checks and balances, but that's, uh, that's not, that's not gonna fly. I mean, each of you have a reason why you support this and why you want it? And I'd like to know what your personal reasons are for that. What, what it is exactly that has brought you to say that this needs to happen? If the ordinance is passed, will the authority of the mayor pro tem also be limited as well? If the mayor, if Mayor Thayer is no longer serving, will the ordinance be withdrawn and hiring and firing authority of new mayor or mayor pro tem restored to complete, to comply with state law? Another one we wanted to discuss is the ordinance for the purchasing limitations of the mayor. Again, what has the mayor done or not done that has brought you to wanna remove his, his ability to do his job, the job that he was voted in by the people for? Okay? Uh, does local government code or any other state law say anything about the limitations on the purchasing authority of the mayor of a type A general law city like Valley Mills? Does the proposed ordinance, which has not been made public, conflict with local government code or state law? What does the municipal league say about limitations on the purchasing authority of the mayor of a type A general law city like Valley Mills? Does the proposed ordinance conflict with opinions or guidance of the Texas municipal league? Does the council have a written opinion from the city attorney advising the proposed ordinance limiting the purchasing authority of the mayor? If, whether it's legal and whether it does or does not conflict with state law? If not, why don't you? Does the proposed ordinance conflict with any other city ordinance or any, or the city's code of ethics governing the conduct of council? What are the specific reasons for considering this ordinance? In other words, what specific purchasing decisions has the mayor made or not made that have brought you to this decision that you wanna come up here and do this? Not just tonight, but you've been doing it forever. Summertime? Councilman Guerrero, I'm gonna hand this to you so that you can pass it around and make sure that everybody gets it. So that y'all can reflect on some of these questions coming out the way of your session.
Next, Roy Finkoff.
Since according to the review, this is the first time Valley Mills has closed for a year and a half, Bill. I take great pride in being in place of the department. Bill's a solid team and is truly caring about this community and both keeping it safe and providing the best service we could possibly offer. Every day, I've encouraged my staff to look at the performance badge and on their uniform as a reminder of what we represent. I started in this business 31 years ago. For over 27 of those years, I've worn a badge, even as far as Afghanistan and Iraq. I've loved this beloved profession. I've lost friends tragically along the way. Some killed in the line of duty and I've often wondered myself, why the other not me? Despite the job's tolls and the damages it causes to the body, it remains a noble profession and one that serves without recognition of race, religion, or socioeconomic status. We don't care what fellow someone is. We don't care where they came from. We don't care how much money they have. We don't care who they love or who they create. We'll believe for everyone of them. Every day, we serve to earn a membership here in Valley Mills community. We take the police department and transformed it from a speed trap city, qualified as a department racing bar and being recognized and credited as a best practices law enforcement agency. It has been through relationships established with trust that have helped us keep our community safe on a daily basis and even lower even crime rate. I thank each and every citizen of the incredible support and partnerships they provided us over the last year and a half. We could not accomplish this without the help of everyone. When we arrived here, we instituted a mission motto, a community united, staying safer together. Unfortunately, as of late, we feel that we are failing to meet this motto of mission. Social media, which we've been amazing tool for communication, has been used as a platform to say whatever you want without fear of any repercussions. Ability has been used to provide a more value to our community. Me at the BMPD want only the best for Valley Mills future. Michael Sengay and Chelsea Phillips are both exactly that. From my point of view, and it is down the hall, but I do see a lot that goes on. They both have incredible integrity and have done the right thing despite being slandered and ridiculed. As cops, we got to have dignity. So the false narrative that a couple have tried writing about us, we stand firm. However, I can in good conscience stand by I.D. While a member of my staff or Mike and Chelsea's jobs are in jeopardy being taken away, tonight, I'm the one who thought for this executive session. And my plan is to go in and address the council in one group. It's hard to get them all together. Getting them all together in one room, I'd really like to try to bridge this gap and squash a lot of this turmoil that's going on. If I fail, I will enter my resignation in executive session tonight.
Next on the agenda, the Senate agenda items listed are routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless council members still require us, in which case the item will be removed from the Senate agenda prior to a motion or vote. The item will then be considered on its normal sequence on the record. Item A is approval of minutes for the June 2022 meeting that was not approved Monday because it was alleged that there was a, a motion made for some bids with the concrete and that was a false statement. Bids were never drawn up. So we need to get those minutes approved and then you wanted an answer for the financials? Cause Mr. Bakerstaff, you were telling everybody there's $65,000.
Actually, it was $68,000 plus dollars that were actually showing on the form. And I just asked where that money was. That was, that was my question, not what happened with it, but where it was. This Phillip said she was going to put all that information together and that's all that I requested. As far as the first part, I do believe there is some witnesses from people that did hear me say we're requesting bids on the concrete.
Any of y'all hear him say that?
What meeting was that?
That was the 11th, right?
That was the, that was, that was the May meeting. The June meetings.
Requesting asphalt.
There was, actually, there was, sir. There was.
And the item came to that?
If it wasn't picked up on the recorder, all I can say is I do have other council that heard that.
Chelsea, did you play that according to the law?
Is this, what, what meeting? 30th, May?
That was the 30th of May meeting, I believe.
The question was asked if we had three bids.
We had three bids.
If three solicitations weren't out and how many we received.
We asked about a bridge in for the concrete addressing Mr. Fitz's alleyway because no activity on it because there was no bids. When we addressed the concrete regarding the 9th Street paving, each and councilman suggested that we add concrete instead of just doing asphalt and do the curving and that we would use art funds and there was never no request or bids.
We had to veri-, we wanted to verify because we changed from asphalt to concrete. And we wanted to obtain a verification of their bid or their quote. So that's what I remember.
I thought to keep it all fair, you always got three bids from everybody so there wasn't.
I don't believe, I don't remember which meeting, but council approved hiring Grant Works to handle this grant. And so everything I did with that street repair was handled by Grant Works.
Gotcha.
And in that meeting, it was, we made a motion and voted on to add some concrete work and it had been approved by the grant. I asked her, can we add concrete work? And she said, yes. I said, do we need bids? And she said, no, we do not. If it's under 50,000 and, uh, then we don't have to have bids.
The, the past history for Valley Mills is anytime you're seeking any work, the procedure is you do an advertisement projecting what it is you're attempting to do. At that point, it's put out whether it's in the local newspaper, area newspapers, online, or as many opportunities as you can to get as many visits as you can. Then you set a date that you will be receiving the bids from A to B. Once you have that B date, it's usually at a council meeting and then those bids are opened at the council.
That's all extremely off topic. You were not approving the minutes because you said that we asked for bids? That was a lie and an attempt to slander me. Can you play the recording and prove it?
I am not lying because I've got a councilman that had heard that.
I wasn't here.
Y'all wanna hear the recording?
Or can I just pull the recording out?
And I will be happy to approve that, but what I'm saying is you're telling me I'm calling you if I'm here. I'm saying if you said, I have a councilman that said they heard it.
I'm telling you, I've got the recording right now because you didn't say that.
Excuse me. If it did not pick it up, I cannot tell the technology. Excuse me.
Hey, I'm the mayor here.
If, if we need to get out of order, we'll have to take that step, but here's the point. If it was not picked up, it wasn't picked up and I'm not gonna argue the fact that technology, I know what I said, but if it is not there, it's not there. That's all I'm saying. So it's up, it's up to councilmen to make a motion.
Can you make a motion, Joe Peres? And the $68,000? Chelsea's got an explanation for that.
I wanna bring something up while you're talking about the concrete. We all agreed that we were gonna replace water and sewer lines. You and I talked about that and I just wanted it brought up. We, we jumped the gun again. So now we got brand new concrete with old sewer lines that they have a problem with, you know, or were having a problem with. Gotcha. I wasn't here, so it's my fault. Well, I don't need to go down in this executive session. I can't ever, I can't say.
Just bring it up.
And councilmen and fellow Valley Mills residents, I would like to provide a short explanation in reference to the questioning I received regarding the negative balance on the profit-loss report for the previous quarter, which was April through June 2022. For accountability, I've attached the profit-loss report for the current fiscal year from October 2021 to July 18th, 2022. As you can see, the city's current profit to date is $166,320 of trekkies sales. I've also attached the profit-loss for the last fiscal year that shows a profit of $12,936 for comparison. I completely understand that different things may have come up between the years and the balances will always fluctuate. I would like to point out a few things, though. Since I started in November, I've had to pay several delinquent bills, bills that were not budgeted for in this fiscal year's budget, but still had to be paid. I would like to point out that even though there are uncrusting circumstances regarding the city's financials, the city's profit margin is still substantially ahead. I know that you know, some quarters will always be more profitable than others due to how the city, most of the city's income is received. To be accountable on that front, I included the profit-loss from April through June quarters for 2020, 2021, and 22, so you can compare the negative balance each year. Unfortunately, summer months are not as profitable as we would like them to be. To add to that, bills are usually higher in the summer months, especially this summer. And that AC problems we are currently experiencing. However, those high utility bills still have to be paid regardless of how much money the city receives from taxes. So does fuel, payroll, and many other things. To be fair, I am not giving you an itemized list as requested of where the amount of close to $68,000, which is now closer to $30,000 after putting in enough financials for June. But I hope this explanation and these documents will suffice. On another note, I would like to point out the profit margins for the water sewer accounts. I know these were not requested, but in the spirit of transparency, I think it's fair to know the increase in the city's profits there as well. For the last fiscal year, there was an income of negative $82,259.88. The current fiscal year shows a profit of $178,041.84. I realize we still have two months left in this fiscal year. I realize we still have two months left in this fiscal year, but I see the city coming out ahead in all areas and will happily provide any explanation or answer to any questions if given the time and opportunity to do so.
I got a question.
Yes?
So our profit so far for this fiscal year in the general fund is $166,000 and our profit in the water sewer so far is $170-something thousand?
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks.
I'll second. I can't vote on it because I wasn't here, so. Isn't that great?
You still have the votes. Okay. And? It's seven minutes in there.
I was hearing.
Heard the last thing.
Oh, July. July, July.
Yeah.
Are you on it?
Yeah, or somebody else is saying it. Oh, he's saying it. All in favor?
I haven't seen it yet. I'm not opposed. I mean, I was just looking at it.
So is that 4-1?
I, I didn't say it was 4-1.
So all in favor?
I'm right here. I got my hand up there. Sorry.
All in.
Next is regular agenda. Review, discuss, and possible action on ordinance for the hiring and firing limitations of the mayor.
It is next to everyone here. So the reason that that was brought up, were you on council then?
That was on the very end of that.
So the reason that the ordinance was even there is it was a safety net for the then-police chief. I think it was ended too, but that's what that was. Instead of one guy, you know, getting mad at the police chief and firing him, it would take a group with a vote. And I mean, it was meant to do that.
So what warrants this being called a meeting to address that? Because I'm just confused being on the council that it's been on the agenda four or five times now and why didn't we take any action on it last, last, last time?
I don't know why it hadn't been. It was.
If, if something gets approved, doesn't it, and then nothing gets signed off of, doesn't, isn't there stipulation or whatnot that it automatically gets?
If a resolution is approved, the mayor has four days to put return and ask for reconsideration. So when this thing was approved and the only thing that was approved was getting the city attorney to draft it. I put return on it and that was in the January meeting. The February meeting was canceled and in the March, it was tabled upon, uh, for more legal advice and that's where it sits and sits. So yes, if the mayor doesn't, uh, sign it and doesn't return it within four days, then yes, it goes into a.
My question is, why, why did we have to have a call meeting to do this now that it's been on the agenda five times? And the last time it was on the agenda, no action was taken because the documents presented were fabricated. So what, what was the urgency behind it?
It's not the only thing.
But my question is, what is the urgency behind it though? That we had to have a call meeting to have this because the last time we had it on the agenda, the documents presented were fabricated, so therefore no action was taken. And now we have an urgency to do it. It's been on the agenda five times. What is, what was the urgency?
I don't think there's urgency. I think that there was, you know, other items that needed to be re, revisited from last week's, the 11th meeting.
Why couldn't we wait until the regular call meeting? Why did we have to have a special call meeting?
Why did we, why did we add several other items to, uh, the call meeting?
Because there was a meeting called and so you take the opportunity, but if there isn't an urgency, why couldn't we just wait until the next meeting?
So that's what, that's what I was saying is that item E was the item that was, um, under urgency to, uh, get it revamped so that it could be voted on to be utilized for the police department. So that'd be the one item that was under the urgency.
Right, but this call, this call meeting was specifically originally called for item A, B, or A, B, and C. So my question to y'all is, what was the urgency?
They have been out. It's been a period of time. It's time to clear them up and get, and just get it taken care of because they've been brought before the council numerous times and tabled and they're just sitting there to, uh, the council to go ahead and bring them back up again since it was brought back to the council, which is what you were supposed to do. And then once it's brought back to the council, at that point in time, uh, it's, it's active on.
So this was so urgent, you couldn't wait till, have this called meeting?
No, Nick, there's a lot of things that are going on and, uh, that's, that's your question and that's your thought. It's appreciated that you have that. I'm just saying, this is, if this was brought up by numerous council, who, this not just me. You want to address it, it's just me.
No, I'm, I'm addressing all of y'all because y'all, three council members requested this call meeting and it was you, you, and you, so I'm asking y'all, what was the urgency that this couldn't wait till a regular call meeting after it's been on the agenda five different times?
It's been on the agenda, it's time to clear it off the agenda. It's time to take care of it.
How many times has it been on the agenda for a long time? Have they been taken?
Okay, that's fine. If you don't have an answer, I'll go off on Mr. Amadio's questions because citizens have a right and transparent, or deserve the transparency. Uh, I'll read them off one by one and you guys can answer them.
I'm sorry, that is not.
And it's addressing, it's addressing.
What did the council say?
It's addressing this item right here. Uh, so what does the local government code or other state law say about the hiring and firing authority of the mayor of a type A general law city like Valley Mills? Does this proposed ordinance, which has not been made public, conflict with the local government code or other state laws?
Other than having the attorney give a definition for that, if he is, if the attorney is bringing this up according to state, state best practices, then it would, it would be him, whatever the city attorney says.
Can you tell me what the local statute for state best practices?
That's a good question. That's what my answer is.
And I've heard of local ordinances.
That's a good question. That's what my answer is. Your, his question. Number one, that's a good question because I don't know what the label, what the other is. I mean, do you? I mean, you can sit there and read it and.
Not a lawyer.
All right. Uh, let's go to number two. Uh, what does the Texas municipal league say about the hiring and firing authority of the mayor of a type A general law city like Valley Mills? Does the proposed ordinance conflict with the opinions or guidance of the Texas municipal league?
Good question for the Texas municipal league.
Okay, but is it conflicting?
Again, the question for the Texas municipal league to ask specifically of that question.
Okay, so, but I'm asking this ordinance that you're trying to pass, is it conflicting with the Texas municipal league to your understanding?
My understanding, if the attorneys that represent the city put this together, then I would imagine that they have gone through all the legal, whatever they've got to read and put together to make sure that it's something that is legal and follows all codes, whether it be Texas municipal league or state taxes.
Does the council have a written opinion from the city attorney that the proposed ordinance limiting the Fox, the hiring and firing authority of the mayor is legal and does not conflict with state laws?
Again, that'd be a question that, uh, if we've asked such an information to the attorney, we will leave you with legal opinion.
We have y'all receiving one. So by putting this ordinance in, you have no legal opinion from our city attorney?
The city attorney won't return any calls or emails.
Okay. I got a copy of some emails that he's been sending, sending us in response to Mr. Rickerstaff's request to take away his mayor position.
That's, that's kind of funny that he wouldn't call us when we were trying to ask legal questions before that and now he's wanting to, so we need a new one. I'm not trying to put anything on you, but that is.
He sent us emails.
He's not technical savvy.
No, I mean, he sent us emails.
Yeah, he sent emails. It was, it was.
Some more questions.
Anybody have a copy of this? This?
Are you not consulting with the attorney regarding the ordinance or any of these ordinances?
I am not. See, I am not consulting or asking, but maybe I was just asking at what stage they are and what is, what are, what need as a council, I have to do to see that they put this together.
So item A was, was the original one and that was, and, and the chief, whenever he got here, I told him, you know, because he was saying, you know, I'm just one vote away or one away from, you know, somebody else came in, um, I just told him that we were planning on changing it to where the city council could vote instead of just one person because, you know, I mean.
So I'd like to read, uh, this email. Mayor Pro Tim Rickerstaff, please be advised that I have wine courtesy copy of the other council members. Please see the attached resolution regarding directing the city attorney to draft ordinances hiring and firing municipal employees and limiting payroll expenditures as previously discussed. Once passed, I will draft the ordinances and submit them prior to the next meeting. It goes down in its highlighted address and around it says, uh, Texas law does not prescribe how council members are necessarily an item placed to be on the agenda of a regularly called city council meeting for a type A general law city that does not have an ordinance on the books. The Texas Open Meetings Act does not include the following provisions. So in that one, this is referencing a different item that's on here, but he says that Texas law does not state that the mayor puts. We also have a email from the same city attorney. This was on, uh, July 11th. This one's on April, in April. It says either the mayor who they called a meeting or it takes the application of three arguments, section 22.038 of the local government code. So here, when he answers Mr. Rickerstaff, he says there's nothing in Texas government code, but a few months prior, he says it is in reference to section 22.038. But, Dr. Passover, so, well, you were just saying that you had a comment at the city attorney and asked these questions.
No, I, I asked the questions and I asked for answers and here's the answers, which are, we put this together, we sent it to him. That was what my statement was.
So does the proposed ordinance conflict with any other city ordinance or city code of ethics governing the conduct and authority of the council or mayor?
This ordinance has not been written by the attorney, then you can't answer that question.
So the ordinance hasn't been written yet?
Actually, what we have are what this was, uh, put together as far as finding the facts, this goes back to the attorney and the attorney writes the ordinance. So this, this is a finding of fact sheet. And the finding of fact sheet is then returned to the attorney and the attorney was the, all of the legal word in there.
But what are the specific reasons for considering the ordinance? In other words, what specific hiring or firing decisions have been made by the current mayor resulting in some of the members, members of the council wanting to pass the ordinance? Were any of these decisions directly, directly contrary to a resolution of the, of the council or an ordinance existing at the time of such decisions and so provided copies of resolution and or ordinance? Is there anything that the mayor has done to remove this?
I can't speak to, ask to, or do anything. This was all put together before I was asked to be on the council. Because we would have to speak to people who were on the council when that was, this was all first put together and that was before my time.
I mean, you answered that question. It was, uh, from the previous administration and the previous police chief, so the answer would be no.
I mean, I'm, I'm with you on that. Uh, Mayor Man Valley, I don't like that, you know, he's basically one election away from being hired or, or being terminated. Uh, I can level with you on that. Uh, let's see here. Uh, this one really keeps my interest. If the ordinance is passed, will the authority of the mayor Pro Tim be limited as well? And if Mayor Dyer is no longer serving, will the ordinance be withdrawn, withdrawn and the hiring and firing authority of the new mayor or Mayor Pro Tim restored to comply with state law?
Actually, no. Whatever the ordinances are, is what should be followed. What any councilman would follow, that's what the ordinance states.
Right.
Follow, you follow that.
So what's the chances that if Mayor Dyer doesn't run for reelection or loses an election and someone else is here, that this, this right here gets abolished within one?
I don't, I don't get.
Not as long as I'm here.
I don't get why it's.
For my pleasure.
Why you feeling like it's directed towards you because it was generated previous to you? So that, that question's kind of ignorant.
I feel like it's directed towards me to be honest to answer the question.
I'm just asking.
I mean, that's an ignorant question to me.
If I can answer the question, this was an emergency meeting called, they couldn't wait till the next available meeting and the first three items were all three directed at the mayor. The other stuff was added because we're having meetings anyways.
Well, that, that ordinance was, uh, towards the mayor, whomever it is, not an individual person, so.
What I understand was, what I'm hearing is the ordinance was put together to a position, not to a person.
I can see where y'all's coming from because like you said, the first three, so I can see where you stand on the agenda item A, but B and C are all new ones, so I can see how somebody in that position would feel like it's being directed towards him because he's a completely new agenda item. So.
Well.
I'm also for that.
So for C, you know, it was.
It was a little more, maybe, you started to protect.
Yeah, okay.
I remember that meeting and I remember his coming to Stansfield to Old Roy, actually asked that question and after he asked the question, then it was a meeting he booked. And the question, if I remember correctly, he asked, you're telling me one man can fire me? Is that not not working? So this is a tactic? I'm not, I'm not trying.
Not at all. Not at all. Not at all. Not on that. We know better than that.
I'm not trying to attack you or anything.
No. Remember the conversation that we had about that?
100%.
The ordn, I mean, it's.
So when.
That, that, not B, C.
This was a meeting down the hall and, you know, just like, uh, the saying goes, I'd rather be tried by 12 than carried by 6. For me, if my fate was to land in just one hand, uh, as opposed to a majority rule, I would certainly want the majority rule. So the ordinance hasn't been written yet?
Actually, what we have are what this was put together as far as finding the facts. This goes back to the attorney and the attorney writes the ordinance. This, this is a finding of fact sheet. In the finding of fact sheet, it's then returned to the attorney. The attorney was the, all of the legal word in there.
But what are the specific reasons for considering the ordinance? In other words, what specific hiring or firing decisions have been made by the current mayor resulting in some of the members, members of the council wanting to pass the ordinance? Were any of these decisions directly, directly contrary to a resolution of the, of the council or an ordinance existing at the time of such decisions and so provide copies of resolution and or ordinance? Is there anything that the mayor has done to remove this?
I can't speak to ask you anything. This was all put together before I was asked the other council. Because we would have to speak to people who were on the council when that was, this was all first put together. And that was before my time.
I mean, you answered that question. It was from the previous administration and the previous police chief. So the answer would be no.
I mean, I'm, I'm with you on that. Mayor Man Valley, I don't like that, you know, he's basically one election away from being hired or being terminated. I can level with you on that. Uh, let's see here. Uh, this one really keeps my interest. If the ordinance is passed, will the authority of the mayor Pro Tim be limited as well? And if Mayor Dyer is no longer serving, will the ordinance be withdrawn, withdrawn and the hiring and firing authority of the new mayor or mayor Pro Tim restored to comply with state law?
Actually, no. Whatever the ordinances are, is what should be followed. What any councilman would follow. That's what the ordinance states.
Right.
You follow that.
So what's the chances that if Mayor Dyer doesn't run for reelection or loses an election and someone else is here, that this, this right here gets abolished within one?
I don't, I don't get.
Not as long as I'm here.
I don't get why it's.
For my part.
Why you feeling like it's directed towards you because it was generated previous to you. So that, that question is kind of ignorant.
Towards me to be honest to answer your question.
I'm just asking.
I mean, that's an ignorant question to me.
If I can answer the question, this was an emergency meeting called. They couldn't wait till the next available meeting. And the first three items were all three directed at the mayor. The other stuff was added because we're having meetings anyways.
Well, that, that ordinance was towards the mayor, whomever it is, not an individual person. So.
Get it. What I understand was, what I'm hearing is the ordinance was put together to a position, not to a person.
I can see where Josh is coming from because like you said, the first three. So I can see where you stand on the agenda I of A, but B and C are all new ones. So I can see how somebody in that position would feel like it's being directed towards him because he's a completely new agenda I was. So I have also for that.
So for C, you know, it was. Yeah, okay.
I remember that meeting. I remember his coming to Stansfield to Old Roy. Actually asked that question. And after he asked the question, then it was immediately booked. The question, if I remember correctly, he asked, you're telling me one man can fire me? Is that not not court?
So this is a type I'm going to be shot for on the trial.
I'm not, I'm not trying.
Not at all.
I wasn't the counsel. I was, I was out there.
Not at all. Not on that. We know better than that.
I'm not trying to attack you or anything.
No. Remember the conversation that we had about that?
One hundred percent.
The ordnance, I mean, it's.
So when.
That, not B, C.
Down the hall and you know, just like the saying goes, I'd rather be tried by 12 than carried by six. For me, if my fate was to land in just one hand, as opposed to a majority rule, I would certainly want the majority rule. But I'm, I wasn't familiar with what state law my history had. I don't remember if there was a vote. I just know that as soon as I said that, the council started with that. You can remember.
So could you not make a motion to amend it to where the hiring and firing of the police team is, is handled by the council as opposed to all hiring and firing? Cause when the government's a day-to-day operation with whoever the mayor is, meaning we've had prior mayors hired and fired and rehired. Y'all vote on all those? Or have any issues with any of those? Let's take you for example. How long were you mayor for?
Two years.
Did you hire and fire on your own court?
I did not. I was the council. Recommendation to broaden my council member decisions for every position, every position because the council is the body, is the governing body for the city. The day-to-day operations of the mayor, basically you're, you're a facilitator. You're making sure that the job is getting done as far as things that need to be done. Example would be we have July 4th celebration that we normally have and go about it for a period of time and scheduling to potentially done so that the park was ready to clean up and in a good stead, including the path was for all people who were coming in. So but that, those are just the examples, day-to-day operations that you do.
Are you talking about this recent 4th of July?
Yes.
So that's a shot at me because most of that's.
No, sir.
Excuse me.
Excuse me. I didn't say that. I said scheduling. That would be having a schedule set prior to because I appreciate the loss. I have lost both my dad and my mother and I fully appreciate not being here for that. But what I'm saying is in the day-to-day operations, when you have an event coming, you should have a schedule set for your crew to be able to see that, that say I'm A, B, C, D, E, you're all done. Not on the same day, but a little bit here for today. That's just scheduling. That's not taking a shot at you. That's just scheduling. Does that make sense?
Do we have an ordinance to review and approve for this meeting that's ready to be implemented? Voted on?
It was on today. We have this, what was sent to us by the mayor. It, it's a resolution. It was returned. And this is again, now we have a vote, personnel hiring termination, which I'm going to read the recorded vote of this particular personal hiring and firing. Nick Guerrero, yes. Bill McCain, yes. Chris Hill, yes. Sam Slover, yes. Curtis Sweet Floyd, yes. This was a ordinance that was put together and passed on hold with your vote on it.
Was it a year before he was elected?
I'm, I'm just reading what was here. I'm just reading the actual information that was on here.
What day, what day?
Where did it come from?
No, what day?
July, I believe it was July 13th of 2020. And if you go back to the minutes, it says that, I'll remember verbatim, but it says that Councilman Slover made a motion to move the.
The date on this was resolved on the 10th day of March in 2022.
But anyways, it says that Sam Slover made a motion to move the, I believe it was just the police department or the police chief under the council. And I believe it states in the minutes that City Secretary Sylvia Rogers asked, okay, the city employees need to start asking, calling council members every day when they have questions about their job. And it says that Sam Slover amended his motion and said, I can see how that would be a problem. I make a motion that would.
Was this June 8th of 2020? So why does mine have Wesley Lewis?
So where this showed up was by a former councilman, Curtis Sweet Floyd. I was there when he did it. He brought it in and dropped it on Chelsea's desk and said, if you'll just get the mayor to sign this, it'll go into effect. Of course, I'm not signing anything from a year before. And then it also reshowled up when Councilman Slover allowed it to get it put on agenda for the meeting before last.
Um, I got a question. So initially, in the Congress, they were just saying the way we've done in the past is been in the state or in the hiring. Is that completely right or wrong?
That's the way it was done. And this was to the mayor to make sure that there's an ordinance to put in the house.
What we need to do is.
I'm like the motion that we need to do is we've done in the past. So it's the, it's towards the hiring and the hiring.
We have a resolution in this. What I'm, I'm saying, the question is, we look at the resolution and turning it to get a ordinance, which is, which was first put together and voted on. This was the 10th day of January 2022. That was put on and reported on January 10th. The motion we need to state, accepting the resolution and the. Ordinance for personal hiring and termination. It started with a resolution. It was a resolution. Then the resolution was returned. Then an ordinance was typed up by the, by the attorneys. And that's a, that was passed this 10th day of January 2022 by the public council. They voted it on. So that is, that's where we are. Yes. This, this was the attorney at Southwest.
The one with the resolution number on it? Is that what you're talking about?
No, it's, it's the, the actual ordinance, which the resolution was done in the ordinance is, is what has to be done.
What do you think about this one? I mean, being safe for ones you're probably more worried about, isn't it? What's your thought? I mean, it's got good, I mean, and gold.
I feel like, on my honest opinion.
Yeah, no, I want your honesty.
Being in charge of day-to-day operations, I'm the one that sees everything that goes on here.
Yeah.
So basically like the government, type A government, a mayor has the executive and the city council has the legislative. In my personal opinion, I would overstep in balance by taking home the executive day-to-day operations. That's just my personal opinion. There are like a municipal officer, city secretary has to go to council. As far as the chief of police, I believe there could be something made where department heads have to go to council. But if you tell a regular at-will employee, a, you know, the mayor has no authority whatsoever, how are you going to expect the mayor to even give them a directive to do whatever or anything like that?
I mean, it would be, it would be your call, but it was just for him. It was, you know, the police chief.
That's ordinance. If I read it right, it doesn't say it just.
Doesn't say the police chief. Basically it's.
Any and, any and all.
If, if there's issues going on, you can bring it before the, the council. The council would say, hey, what's your recommendation? Your recommendation is, then we're going to follow that recommendation.
If that one hundred percent, but if every employee hypothetically is still on the customer or racial slaughter, are you going to say, continue doing what you're doing for three or four more weeks and talk to me?
It's all, it's all meeting simply on that and do a written, promoting a written warning to that particular employee.
Or just put them on administrative label or something like that.
Yeah, there's things you can do until, until that, until the meeting or whatever is over. The way that also protects you from an HR standpoint, if there is a, said she said, if it's written up from our council, then the council's employees want to receive.
I mean, I like your department head thing. That was, but on the flip side, I also agree with Ray. That's kind of protecting you also or, or the position, you know. So.
I was thinking of.
Oh, I was just saying, I agree with Josh saying that with the department heads, but also it's also protecting a mayor's position also by kind of extracting him out of that day-to-day operations to bring any HR actions to council. That's what I was saying.
Why are we down? Wait on motion.
Mr. Gobby, you started a motion. So.
Well, okay, I can make a motion that we adopt the resolution or we'll not vote through one or two. This has been legally written by law. That is correct.
Is that, is that the same one that's with the one?
This, this is the original. This is where it's been typed. And it goes from here, it goes to the ordinance.
So I guess the numbering, is the numbering the same?
I mean.
And is that, is the resolution that they already drafted in the ordinance?
Looks like it's already drafted into the ordinance. It's the ordinance that needs to be approved.
What's this one?
We want to. Thank you. The three, the ordinance doesn't have numbers. It's not just numbered, but it's, it's a routine task. I might vote for the, 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 the.
It was just, you know, everything's changed. I'm not voting for them, to be honest. Cause this is supposed to be just a police chief. It doesn't matter what anybody thinks of you or what I think of you. That's what, this is the, this is different from what was warranted.
So what all, going on your thing, what all or who all are department heads? Would that be?
Max Water, department head.
Mike Glassing James, the chief of police. And she's already municipal officer. She left. That's already, that's state law. That's.
Right. I, I mean, I agree with what you're saying is that it says any and all. Where is it?
How much do you know about police work? Same as me, none, right?
Well, I'm a police officer.
Wait, really?
Four years.
I'm real. How much do you know about police work, huh? I mean, so I mean, you know, that's, that's, that's what that was originally drafted for was to save the police chief.
And so this one says, uh, hiring and termination of all employees of city who are not city officials. So yeah, I, I agree with, you know, not, that doesn't include, it's opposite of what the intent is, right? I mean.
Yes.
From me reading it.
So if we want to change it, we'd have to just terminate this or just make an amendment on?
Probably the best thing to do would be to discard this and start a new one. That would be the simplest way to do it because this has been rewritten many times.
A lot.
So the simplest way to do it would be to. So the simplest way to do it would be to. Wait this one. We can amend the order right, if you wanted to write up another one. It would be. Be written and rewritten.
I agree with that.
So are y'all saying? You want it would exclude department heads?
No, it would, that's what it would include. Because right now, the way it's written, it's excluding department heads.
They're all city employees.
Yeah, but that would give, like Josh was saying, that would give him the authority to. If there was a disgruntled employee or whatnot, that would give him the authority to make any firings if, if. He sees fit or the mayor sees fit. And as of right now. It does not include the. City officials would not have to come to the council the way it's written. And we want it to come to council for the department heads. Right?
If it needs to be, recommendations to rewrite it that way. And this would be. With a lack of a second. Motion has been made. Made with a lack of a second, a second.
Then I concur with that.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? No second. Okay, is that no action taken? Who under? If you discuss a possible action on ordinance for the purchase of.
Well, I don't want to take on this one.
It was part of this. Item A. Which was the. Resolution. That was initially put forward, which. Something about, he was talking about that 021422. That was one that was voted on. And. Put together as a resolution.
What are the specific reasons, reasonings for considering this ordinance?
That was for the purchase of ATV, we'll have to wait to discuss on its bottom.
Who's acting on that? I, I am that one too. Purchase of.
We need.
Explain the purchase of the ATV. I don't have the line item from me, but there's an equipment line item in. Water, Sulu, Florida. Had $10,500 in it. We sold the city tractor, I don't remember for how much, a little over $2,000. It cost that. Funds up to over $13,000. With only two months left in the fiscal year. There is still a little over $4,000 left in that particular line item. That was voted on and approved by council for the year. So. What did that money?
Were you on there then?
I want to say that was right whenever Josh and I first got a letter, the mayor and I first got a light it. So if we're putting in an ordinance for something that happened a year ago.
It's just coming up, you know what I'm saying, back up.
But I mean, I mean, is that the specific reason why we had to have a call meeting to the purchase of ATV a year ago?
No, I think it was just in this package deal. Being honest.
I mean, this is the first time that this has come up to my recollection as an ordinance to be passed through council. I know I A has come up multiple times, but this is the first time I've seen item D come up since I've been serving on council for limitations of the mayor. I'm, I mean, are we just trying to take away day-to-day operations from the mayor as the, I mean, the city's got to operate, so he's got to be able to make. Justifications for purchasing within budgeted items. Was this a time to have a mayor?
That was like what Chris was saying on the unobligation of funds for the UTV. Because I remember that, you said something like, we got that pickup, we can just take the doors off of or whatever.
Remember?
I remember him saying that on the side.
We just spent 10,000.
But that was not a motion or voted for. I specifically asked in a meeting if we could sell the tractor and the city pickup. I voted to allow me to sell the tractor and y'all voted to move the city pickup to the police department to use for it and the truck.
Yeah.
You made a side comment about something about taking the doors off of a. Truck so they could read meters in the pickup truck. So, but that was never a motion, so this deal that, you know, that gets put in the paper that. It was voted on, which is false information.
I think it was just discussed, wasn't it?
Yes, it's a side discussion.
Gotcha.
But, but my question is, is why aren't we just now bringing this up a year later after it's already been purchased? You two guys have had a discussion about it. I was there first.
Yeah, no, it was dead, that's why I.
Y'all squashed it, so why aren't we bringing it up again? Why aren't we having a call meeting for something that happened a year ago? You two discussed it amongst gentlemen, squashed it, moved on.
That was till the tabloids came out. Then it was brought back up, presumably, so.
Why are we here on a special call meeting for this? If it's already been resolved, I'm not sure.
Trying to get things done, I guess. I mean. We'll get this taken care of, washed out, and then we're done.
Bring closure to what? They've already, they've already squashed.
He actually said that, you said, don't vote, but you didn't.
Okay, I was wrong. It was a discussion.
Like, everybody out here that just believes the stuff, you can open records request, well, you don't even have to open records request meetings. You can look at them online or ask this form and we'll give it to you. If it's not voted on in a meeting and approved by council, it's not law. But what was voted on in a meeting and approved by council was the budget that I went off of. And I took it when I asked, I told. Everybody that was on council at the time, they need another lawnmower and they need a golf cart. Well, I asked my department head, I said, what do you need most? Because we're only going, probably only going to be able to get one. And he said, well, since the lawnmower is running and the golf cart does not run. We need to continue to read meters so that people can continue to pay their bills and we don't have to cut their water off. So I said, then we'll use it for the UTV or ATV, whatever you want to call it. And then next year, if the, if the lawnmower cracks out. We'll get the lawnmower next year, but.
So my question is, so the council agreed.
There was never a motion, it was never an agenda item, it was just a side conversation that was had.
But we just, just to clarify, we just spent $10,000 on a pickup. So we had two pickups because then the two guys didn't get along, so they couldn't ride the same pickup together.
Yes and no, to clarify that, you didn't technically spend $10,000.
Well, yeah, just.
You moved it from one account to the other, but the city of Valley Mills never lost $10,000.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm with you, I'm with you.
And like so far, I think Chelsea explained that we profited $160,000 so far this fiscal year in general fund. And we profit $170 something thousand in water and sewer. So, you know, while it seems just by these agenda items that I'm under attack, city's doing pretty dang good financially.
I mean, you gotta say it's not personal, but we're bringing up something that happened a year ago on a special call meeting. And there's no discussion over it. And over an item that wasn't even an agenda item, it was just a side discussion. And these two gentlemen squashed it amongst each others. I mean, there's going to be growing things, but why are we having a special call meeting for something that happened a year ago that we've already moved on?
Would it not be beneficial for everyone to hear the entire story? As, as Councilman Miller has said. That was all this information out there going on. And he said, she said, let's bring it up so we can get a resolution. And that's what council, I understand, we want to put this up dead. That's where we're trying to go.
So you want to take over the day-to-day responsibilities of the mayor?
I do not want to take over, I've had the day-to-day responsibilities for the mayor. It's not a job I wish I was trying to run.
Because that's all you're doing is handicapping the mayor by reducing his purchasing limitation. What, what is the purpose of having an election and having a mayor?
Just because you have the mayor, there's a fiduciary responsibility for all the taxpayers and the money that they put in. And with that, you want to make sure that the money is spent appropriately and positively for the, for the taxpayers. So with that, if there was never a agenda item put on for the purchase of that. Then let's get that clarified, let's say that it's not. If there is a budget item, one of the things that I always thought was important. Is if you have an item that you're getting ready to purchase, bring it back before the council so they're aware of it. And then they can say, yeah.
Right. So my question would be this, our utility bills for the city can range anywhere from $5,000 to $8,000 a month. We have several thousand per year budget. Does it need to come before council or every time maybe election?
No.
No.
And that's an exaggeration. We're not trying, we're, we're not working. Not, yes. Hey, you know, I just, these checks and balances, I know a lot of people don't even like it. We're all in this together. And if we all know what's going on, we know what's going on. My biggest deal is trying to catch up. I wish government done a better job than government.
And in saying that, you know, the thing that y'all did at Brookshires, you know, you got engineer out here, he'll, if you call him and ask him, he'll come and do anything for you.
What do we do at Brookshires?
I'm just talking about the, the concrete and stuff like that, I mean, it, you know, Nick's a fireman, Brother Gobby, he's retired. Ray, he does something, I don't even know what he does. But anyway, I mean, you know, everybody here can bring something to the table. And if you, if, if we could all just come together and ask each other, you know, and try to help, you know, I mean, I think we could be, you know, pretty powerful.
And let me, I was under the impression that you were asking to tell them not to buy the body. And that, you know.
And that's the story that's going around?
Yeah. And that's the reason we need to discuss this. Learn guys, be nice to.
I think that was, it was, it wasn't voted on, it was discussed and we agreed not to buy it. And you did because your guys said they needed it and that's what you did, so. And you also said you'd never do anything like that again whenever we had our discussion at the table.
I was there. It's growing things, maybe we stayed, don't know if to it. It comes to council if it is, but he didn't have to, but we had a discussion about it. That's why I'm wondering why we're bringing it up a year later.
Richard, he just, he just answered your question. Answered your question.
I mean, I think we could put a cap on something, you know what I'm saying, to keep. I don't know.
And so, just so y'all know how day-to-day operations work, works here, in case y'all want to change it. When that budget for each fiscal year is approved in September, there's line items for everything. And so if somebody needs something that meets that line item that y'all approved, I say. Well, if you go, once you go over, that's it for that line item, you can't get anything. If they go over for that line item and they need something else, I come to y'all and ask for a line item transfer. I've been trying to get line item transfers for street payments for like two or three months, because there's so much money in other line items that is not being utilized. And, but that's what I, what I'm trying to say is. I don't go over what, I mean, we're coming in so far under budget this year. We're, we're spending less than we expected to spend and we're making more than we expected to make.
The secretary, whenever you took over your job, what, what was the general funding, what was the amount?
On November 8th, it was $93,000. And today, in general fund, it is $246,842.85.
So. Out of those figures, anything in there indicate that money is being misspent, misappropriated?
It's it.
I'm asking.
It's it.
I'm asking. Any, anything like that? That there needs to be a limitation on purchasing?
I understand this was supposed to be together for, I'll send you my cell phone. We asked this clarification, that clarification. So at this point, you're being in a motion for that clarification.
I'm asking.
If you're asking the same question, do you answer some questions?
So if there's nothing more to discuss, I'm going to ask.
At this point, if there is no, if there is no.
I guess my question is, do we have limitations on the process?
I don't know if there's anything in writing, but if it's, if we don't have the amount left in a budget line item. Then certainly it has to come to, to the council, the council.
That's, that's the way it should be, because you're actually pulling the council. And that's what we're looking at is. You're looking at, maybe it's just. I'm courtesy to say, hey, we're getting ready to spin, this is the line item on this particular item that is needed. The council's going to say, sure, but it's just allowing them to know what's, what all is going on and that's just communication. And that's where we're trying to go with this. Make sure we have a way of communication.
Is that what you're saying? Okay. I thought it's just office, cell phone, tablets, $20,000, but that is.
And. The link for the renegotiation doesn't work, and instead we don't need to be there just for something quite.
You got it, you got a good pick up. You had a good pick up.
All right. So, to get things moving, what? So we need to get this, I mean, there's a lot of, just good discussion.
If it fails, a lack of motion.
Okay.
If there's no motion on item B. Then we move on to item C. So you can call and see if there's a motion, and if there's no motion, move forward.
Do we have a motion? A motion, I'd like to take them. I would say that you can discuss possible action on generating an ordinance that allows anyone. Alderman to place an agenda item on either council meeting, two or more aldermen to agree on agenda items to be posted on a call meeting.
That came up with the response from Adam, the city attorney. And the understanding of his verbiage on it. So that's, that's why this item got put on.
The question, the reason this came up is, in the past, if an alderman wanted something to put on a council meeting. They would either go to the mayor or the city secretary and that item would be placed on the agenda. It would be placed on the agenda. That was the way they had it done, but waiting for law reads and waiting. Attorney. Adam. Stated that. The ordinance, if an ordinance is put together, then that's what they would follow. They just said. When one spell spread, with three on a. Regular, excuse me, on a call meeting, then on a regular meeting. Of course, but what we're, what we were trying to do was say, if a, say, a group of concerned citizens came to an alderman and said, I would like to have this. Kind of in the council, the alderman. Actually bill, to either the mayor or to the secretary in there that I've placed on. That was just from a one versus a two or three. That was the reason to put this up, so it's just for a regular call meeting, it would be one council. Regent. For a regular meeting, and then for a call meeting, it would be two or three. That's all that was.
I, I mean, I don't know what, what state law is versus local ordinance currently. I don't have a problem with a, a single county. I don't have a problem with a single councilman calling Chelsea or B and having B tell Chelsea to put it on the agenda. The issue that I have, uh, just a hypothetical, if you've got an individual that's been getting on the, uh, trying to get on the agenda for three years, saying that you owe money for a water bill, and every single meeting, and they can't come up with any evidence that you owe them money, there comes a point when there's no reason to keep putting it on the agenda for three years. You know what I'm saying? So, there's gotta be some discretion on what you put... If somebody wants to come and say, man, I hate the mayor, that's what says the comments
I like... I like putting it down on, uh, one alderman on a regularly meeting and two for a called, like, kind of what Ray was saying is, if citizens come, it kind of eliminates us from getting a... Not having a quorum together because it could be very easily, um, with text messages or emails for establishing a quorum. So, it kind of eliminates that on that aspect. So, I do like that. But, um, like, if there was that situation, if we brought it to you or the secretary, at least that would be one person to bounce their thoughts off of. So, does that make sense?
Like I said, I don't know what state law is on that specific deal, but I don't have a problem with one or two council members being able to put something on the agenda versus thirty.
An ordinance that says that that way stimulates it. Hopefully, it won't go through the one, that's the water issue. If the council, those of this is going on, and they realize that you've got one person that's continuing the same thing over and over and over again, that doesn't mean they're gonna put it on the agenda. No one wants to sit there and listen to someone saying, I'm gonna say, hate the mayor, you're the problem for everything, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I gave my worst idea the other day, and I said, what was? I don't hate you at all. I said that, what bothers me, I'm here to try to work with the experience that I've got to try to make sure everything is fine.
I told them on the phone the other day, y'all's good to get along. Y'all would be really good together. I mean, Ray knows too much sometimes, but he knows a lot. And, I mean...
Motion to be to, uh, a commission ordinance that allows anyone to alderman to place an agenda item on a regular council meeting or two or more aldermen to agree on agenda items proposed to call me.
Is that your motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
A second.
I'm in favor. That's the final rule. I would need for you to discuss some possible action on the establishment of the city's tax rate required by law. And my first question before we begin discussing is, do we not have to have a public hearing?
Actually, actually, this is more of an informational section right here. So, I think we can put information out there.
So, there can be no vote?
So, no, there's no vote. There is no vote. There's no possible action at all. It's just a... We get the information out there. As you know, every year, the city is required to set a tax rate. When a tax rate is set, then, uh, once you go through the process, you have the... Mayor sets the tax rate, it's brought before the city. There's a week's worth of advertising to let them know that this... I want to remind everyone to come in and do that. Then, once that's done, uh, it's approved at the meeting. Then it goes twenty-four hours. The council then sets the rate. And twenty-four hours later, the council then adopts that particular rate. Last year, there was no rate set. There was a rate adopted, but no rate was set. And so, unfortunately, because there was no rate set, with the taxes, the way that they went up on profit taxes, city had an opportunity to lower the city tax rate because of that.
Counsel voted to keep the tax rate set.
But you did not set a tax rate. You have to go through the procedures to set a tax rate.
Just because you... The procedures that Arlene Sweeney and county tax officers, that we go through, suggested we had a public hearing, and the council voted to keep the tax rate set.
Was it set for everyone, and then following the protective of particular steps? Was that done? That's... That is where that's going to make sure that it's done, because this year, to be able to set a tax rate, we have to make sure that a tax rate was actually set. Because in talking to the head of Bosskey County, all he had was a proved rate and not a set rate. So, that means that you need contact him and let him know.
Was he Arlene Sweeney who was setting the taxes for Bosskey County?
Actually, the one that handles that is the charge of the appraisal district. That's where that comes from, the appraisal district. So, if you would let him know that, because he's saying that he did not know that, so that would... That would take care of it. Once that's done, we can show that we have a set tax rate, then we can start working on getting the tax rate put together for this year. But then, this was actually supposed to be turned in, the tax rate on from I-16.
It had to be done by the sixteenth, or is that...
Setting a tax rate.
Is that fiscal year by chance, or is it calendar? Like...
No. You have sixteen to set the rate and have it all approved. They will give you extensions if you request an extension. But extensions have to be requested.
Okay.
In argument, what I would suggest, if y'all want to know how it really works, call Arlene Sweeney, tell her to text. She had to walk me through every step last year when we had to set a hearing. We had a hearing, but they said if you're not changing it, you don't by law have to have a hearing. But if you're gonna lower it or raise it, then you have to, uh, set a hearing. So, yes, it would have been on the agenda coming up to set a public hearing date because it's getting up to big time for that. I wouldn't have waited this emergency meeting was gonna happen.
So, what do we need to do with that?
It was just review and discuss.
Okay.
That's all the ways.
And that'd be calling Arlene Sweeney about establishing a tax rate.
Who I go through. She's very nice. She walks me through every step, what we have to do.
I have it all prepped up already.
So, since we're...
And also, if there was a sixteenth that month, I promise you, she would have emailed or called me by now because I'm getting...
So, since we have some in McLennan County, do we have to do the same thing for McLennan? Okay.
Yes.
All right. I...
Further discussion on D? Next is I-8, discussion, review, and possible action on using twenty to twenty-five thousand of ARPA funds for police radios.
I have a question for you. So, you communicate with Bosskey County, right?
Yes, sir.
And they're on VH... V... VF... What is it?
Uh, it's not the eight hundred megahertz, but it's on UHF.
Gotcha. And McLennan County's going to digital, and they're supposed to be giving two radios to... They're supposed to be... Once they do that, I think they're giving them to two, to the fire departments, and then... I didn't know if you were gonna get some.
I have not been. I haven't told you.
Supposedly, uh, that's... That's the case. Well, has, um... Jimmy Boyd, did he get... Did he get the repeater and all that working before? So, you just need new radios for the car?
So, none of our radios, um, will transmit inside the building, uh, house, uh, certain areas of town.
Yeah.
And that's one of the...
Hang on.
Go into disturbance and sub-residents, we're relying on our phones to go this way.
Gotcha. And it's just they're old, probably?
Um, they're old, and they're very good cheap brand.
Gotcha.
Like, you couldn't even consider Mattel, you know, because it was just a hard brand.
And once you get the radios, they should link up with the repeater correctly where you can communicate with Bosskey County then?
So, um, where this all originated from, I appreciate you thinking about this, but, um, the mayor and Councilman Guerrero were seeing the number of repairs that were going into pre-old and dilapidated fleet. So, they had recommended, um, thinking out of the agenda, twenty to twenty-five thousand for the person to be, um, and... Councilman Goddard came back and, uh, said that there might be some alternative measures that we could put in place, like parking patrol vehicles here as opposed to taking home, as well as, you want to know what is the most important thing that we have out there that's like a big-ticket item? Radios, of course. I don't carry a handheld because it's still unreliable. I go, uh, I just take my phone with me. And it served me well, you know? This town doesn't have, uh, a whole lot of action in it, but when things do go wrong, I mean, it can be dangerous.
And wouldn't the handheld radios also go towards the accreditation that you were talking about last time?
Yes. So, they will come in and they will test to make sure that we have communications with the dispatcher, and that communication fails, that's the suspect. I've been in touch with Motorola, that's the top brand.
Yeah.
What's it called?
Can you give car stereo?
Yeah. So, uh...
So, do the radios and the patrol cars work fine? No?
I don't know. I'm sure it's on. She actually told me this, that the radio, she can...
So, well, y'all, so, with the fire department, you have... If you're... Say you're in Clifton, you switch to Clifton repeater, which that's what Valley Mills has to do, and if you're here, there, everywhere, you change to different repeater. So, is yours gonna pick up the Meridian repeater if you're in Clifton? Is that what it does? Do you have a way to change that?
If I have a Motorola radio, uh, if it's a digital service, I... It's a similar, but it's a bad one. I would think that Bosskey County would hopefully be able to do that also.
No, I checked on that point. So, they're... They're three to five years. It's not even on the docket right now. So, the only reason I did that is because if you went and spent, you know, a large chunk of change on radios that wouldn't work, you'd be like, you know, well, this... You could communicate with McLennan County eventually, but you wouldn't be able to communicate with Bosskey.
Right. And there are primary dispatches, so it's... And I... And so, I've been in touch with Motorola, they're a top brand, top radio, but, um, as I told the city secretary, here, I wouldn't be able to get a... Where in the exploration process?
Gotcha.
If y'all wanted to put that...
I think the Motorola, the handhelds, I mean, they... It was seven hundred and fifty, not for y'all, but for the fire department, was seven hundred and fifty apiece. And that was, uh... I don't know if that... I mean, it'd have to be the same... It wouldn't be the same frequency, but it would be the same radio because it would be communicating with the same towers.
Yeah. You are...
But it still handles all of that, correct? I'm for getting you some radios. For sure.
I appreciate that. Especially, you know, I guess may have kind of old school, but if you're being... If you're taking the proper safety precautions, should be equipped with a radio.
Only when the cell phone tower is down, you have no way to communicate with dispatches. As long as you have a...
I'll tell you, if we can do some more exploration for y'all, they'll look for handhelds. Because there's... There's... I've also heard talk that they were... You said three to five years, but they were gonna look for a... The structure of communications. Twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. We waited, you know, a year and a half. Whoever was here before us, they also did. I would imagine. I'll tell you this, it's better than it probably hasn't been because of the new building that y'all constructed, um, the equipment in the building. You would turn it on because it was a problem of time because there was an instrument that was in the building that was not compatible with the repeater. And if you flipped the switch on that, it would have... That's been... That piece has been...
I have one question for you, sir. That's all, man. That fundraiser of, uh, the bid on the roof for both the fire department and for the police department, one of the things that the police department had said was equip a potential radios is what they're looking at. Fundraiser that we had actually in this building. I know y'all received a check for over eighty-six hundred dollars. And there was a quote sent with information going to the mayor and to you about radios and that. My question is, why wasn't it ordered used with that particular... Question. I'm just getting clarification of it.
I took it as just a question. So, the reason why we didn't do anything, um, at that point is we had higher priority items. I had an evidence room that is in complete disarray, plus it is now one-hundred percent countable building. We bought software that we had from a spiral notebook that was not really even legible to where everything is digitized now in computerized. So, we prioritized. We had no orders that indicated we had to do that. We explored votes all the time. I got one for an explorer.
Sure. That's just a question so that... Because that was some thoughts that were actually out there, and you explained it. Thank you. That was it. That's all.
I make a motion at the table, E.
Thank you. I'm gonna have to discuss and review a possible action on accepting RFQ, request for qualification by the city. Our city secretary on hiring auditors for the city of Valley Mills and approval of newspaper ads. So, basically, we need to hire a auditor, and we're asking for permission to seek bids and trying to find an auditor.
I make a motion that we approve, uh, seeking bids and newspaper ads. Yes. The question for the motion is that right here is item F, guys. It's got a little stick on the side. Item F.
Uh, can I just... I make a motion that city secretary be authorized and directed to send a request or proposal to three data recovery consultants to restore all files and records deleted from the hard drive in the future that's currently in possession of Bosskey County's sheriff and authority
Was there... Was there... Did they lose a bunch of data on that as far as for audit purposes?
We can't get any grants now because somebody's audit done. I was trying to, uh, work with, uh, Grant Works to put in for one of these, but we're pretty qualified for five hundred thousand, but we can't do an audit with those. We need to move forward with that.
With the, uh, we're using the... Would the, uh, if we're using, do they not have, uh, do they have backups, do they have backups on all of that? They should do that.
It needs to be a forensic audit, because it's really handicapping us being able to apply the grants and move forward with the, with the audit. Move access to some of the grants.
Thank you.
Yep, I need to re, redo it.
Yes.
Slowly, I make a motion that the city secretary be authorized and directed to send a request for proposal for data recovery consultants to restore all files and records deleted from the hard drive of the computer currently in possession of the Boski County Sheriff or DA office.
M F, right? M F, you gotta, you're adding that to M. You wanna do the, the forensic too?
I would love to do this, but, yeah. I would love to do this.
I second that.
All family? I would need to discuss review, possible action on recommendations of the infrastructure advisory committee to Valley Mills City Council documents I posted, this is another one.
Good evening. Um, included in your package, you will find the recommendations of the infrastructure advisory committee from the city council. Um, Stacy Eastabler has a limited number of copies available, anybody who would also like copies, what's included, just raise her hand, she'll be happy to pack that out. Um, presumably in preparation for tonight's meeting, you have read the documents provided to you sparing me the task, reading them aloud. However, I would like to bring forward some additional comments related to each of the recommendations. Um, we actually have cleared up the audit twenty twenty-one, congratulations, thank you for that. Um, I'll read my comments just for the audience, um, just to reiterate a little bit of what Nick had made, commented in his motion. At the regular meeting on July twelfth, council authorized the city secretary to send out an RFQ to a minimum of three auditing firms in the area to perform an audit of the city's financial records for twenty twenty-one. The procurement of an auditing firm to conduct the twenty twenty-one audit and all future audits is crucial and should be considered the top priority for the city. Until a proper audit has been conducted on the city's twenty twenty-one financials and the findings have been released, the infrastructure advisory committee is on hold. And that is because we do not qualify for any grant without a proper audit. So I am thankful for the action that was just taken, thank you. The second, um, recommendation is the airport property. Um, this has been a sensitive topic in the past, but let's be clear about what this recommendation means. This recommendation is simply a housekeeping item to ensure the city of Valley Mills is the sole beneficiary of any potential sale proceedings and control of the use of the land. However, it is not appropriate for the conversations to even begin without council approval and the appointment of trusted individuals to return their opinion to the council along with their recommendation. After I finish with comments, Paul Maribel has offered to field any questions that the council may have relative to the airport property recommendation. The last recommendation that the committee has brought forward is a bond issue. And this obviously is the least favorable of the recommendations. However, a necessary step to learn more about planning, developing, and implementing a plan for the long-term sustainability of the city now and in the future. Paul has also agreed to field questions, um, that you might have based on the information that was found in the project. Any question? On this discussion of review or action, which is listed on the agenda?
So, did I understand we're applying for a later?
Yes.
Or a lease?
We're asking for a, no wait.
Or a lease? You have a lot of restrictions. Yeah, we're asking for permission to go start that process. And there is a process, Paul.
Can you elaborate a little bit on that process for us, Paul?
Yeah, it requires, uh, apparently your, your city attorney is well aware of the requirements, we wish to go in CFR section is floating in there. And it requires a, uh, written application, explaining why, why you make the application. The reason why I continue to have that restriction, it can only be used as an airport. It's no longer needed in the United States, and that's why I'm a, it's a crossfire. Airports apparently like this all over the United States, so, uh, we're the way to get them to do it. Uh, we have a plan in place that we discussed with your city attorney, getting, uh, director officials involved. Feeling very confident that we have good success in the process. So we're asking for authority to do that.
Uh, and on the, well, guys, you're both here.
Yeah.
Um, I appreciate your knowledge, uh, on the bond issue. I've never been involved in a conference, I don't know a whole lot about it. Could you elaborate a little bit on how that would affect the city? If you would know that route of the bond?
Yeah, the, uh, everybody else has gone through the bond issue, the only one that I have been involved in is the school bond issue. So they were involved and they have city secretary. It's a very involved process, you do have to get qualified professionals involved, in this case, it would require a bond counsel. Also a financial advisor and then a fund writer. This, this, they work very closely with the infrastructure committee to figure out whether you go out for one single bond or whether you do it in a series to stagger along with your, your grant receipt. But that's well beyond this conversation, well beyond my knowledge, that's why you have a secretary. And when you asked about the impact, um, I understand that you talked to the mayor that the anticipate, the city anticipates producing about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year in annual taxes. Which is a goodly sum. But I looked at the, the impact if you had a five million dollar bond, and so for those of you who haven't been following this process, Grant Works has indicated, they've worked with the city in large and worst conditions, and their infrastructure, as they say, is similar to what they understand of the condition here. And they're saying that the city's portion of maximum requirements to get the land is necessary, many dollars, between five and seven million dollars. And we have no clue at this point, we're going with Grant Works, too. So I looked at the interest rate on a thirty-year double A, which would be an investment grade bond. The site I looked at, uh, showed an interest rate of three point eight four percent. All the bonds are all in those, pretty, pretty set, so the way the bond would work, you would take the five million and you multiply that by three point eight four percent, so that's one amount. But then the city is also required to put a, in this case, a thirty-year bond, about one-third of the bond base amount into a sinking fund, so that in the thirty-year period, the city has the money paid off the bond, and in the meantime, it's been paying the interest. So if you do the mathematical calculation, um, the interest that would be paid each year is a hundred and ninety-two thousand. Then the sinking fund obligation would be about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Now, this is Paul Maribel speaking, you had a bond counsel up here, you can pay a whole lot more about how that works. Just a simple calculation, that totals three hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, plus now two hundred and fifty, so the gap that addition, one of the one of y'all has had, a hundred and sixty percent, taxes are pre-plured, you have it in the tax. Thing says, that's a thing of the future, but it's certainly not our decision to do that, maybe.
So on a, well, I've got you here, uh, on, on a tax base, let's say, let's say my taxes are two thousand dollars, at a hundred and fifty percent increase. You say, say I'm looking at five thousand dollars in taxes each year?
That's the calculation.
Or a bond of this nature?
Yeah, and those, those bond funds, you know, are earmarked, payback, those have the one taxes earmarked, payback, that's all part of what the underwriting does.
But why would you get a bond for the whole city and cost instead of doing it a little bit at a time?
Again, you know, Chris, that may be the way it works out, but, you know, let's say you do it in a series of a million dollars.
Have, have you ever thought about if, if you did sell the land and say all the houses went up there, what it would do to the schools? I mean, wouldn't you have to get a bond there, so it's gonna cost you regardless?
Well, it depends on what, what's the benefit of doing, they can set up, you know, a specific...
It might increase the taxes, but it's gonna cost you as a homeowner more money because you're gonna have a bond for that, correct?
Well, you know, one thing, again, I'm not a bond counsel, but what I have seen...
And I think they're already having problems filling seats at the schools, so...
Over the years, I have seen them put up a municipal utility district. And if you do that, where you have a tax fund that's coming from a certain area, like when they build, uh, stadiums, they'll apply a tax to that, get their bonds out, and the tax generated by that facility pays that bond. Municipal utility districts can be set up and taxes can be identified, I've been told that can be done, so, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that could be done. Plus, the city, if they got the five million, like the unseated dollar, that's for good money. This council asked us to look at non-tax ways to do this, and so we're, we're bringing this as one of our recommendations.
Paul, Paul, it was just hypothetical, uh, maybe, uh, this is like the reasons we solve the problem and just step away. What would be possible? We don't put no restriction, let an investor buy and do whatever he wants. We get the money, we get the five million.
If you got, and this is me talking.
Yeah, that's amazing.
If I were making the decision, I mean, get rid of the, uh, the use restrictions that we have now. And, and we talked to the city of Waco, and that's a discussion for another day, but I've got ideas about that, too. Where we have control over that use. We can set up whatever restrictions we want, we can say mobile manufacturing house, mobile home, no, whatever we want to do, no, no industrial sites. City has control, and we own the property, we set up, put whatever restrictions we want. That would be my recommendation.
But I mean, we're not supplying anything yet, any family.
Again, that's part of the negotiation with, uh, did I understand the offer that was presented here, the five million dollar offer? They were gonna relieve the city of Valley Mills from any requirements to supply water, sewer, because they were gonna take care of their own deal, probably set up municipal utility district, drive their own water, whatever, sell water, whatever. That's all in the negotiation, and that's beyond this discussion, but it's a good question, right?
So the city is still capable, if we were to sell the property, of having ultimate control, let's say, of what happens with that property?
I don't see any reason why the deed from the city couldn't contain whatever deed restrictions we were left to negotiate in the morning.
Does the city own the water rights to that property?
How bad is the children's tree?
Children, Hall Creek owns the water rights to that property?
They're not, I don't think they're supplying any of the years out there, so they would have to build their own infrastructure out there, water as well.
So Hall, you could not drill a well out there because Hall Creek would own the water rights, is that correct?
I, I don't know if that's the case for you.
Cause I mean, that's, that's old, you know what I'm saying? I mean, back, back in the forties, thirties, whatever, you know, I mean, you can see Valley Mills.
That would be a conversation...
So I can tell you what Waco's been up to. Out in, um, oh, shoot, out off of, you're headed to west, there's a pecan orchard over there. They bought that pecan orchard just for the water rights, just for the water that they pump from the tree, I mean, you know, to the pecan orchard, because they are gonna start, um, taking the saltwater out of the Brazos River. Okay, so they bought those water rights, are you following me? So how do we know that that's not Waco trying to buy that land just for the water rights and then turn around and sell it again, because that's what they did there, just for the water rights? So then you're gonna get however many houses, are you following me?
If it was, if it ever was to be solved, it would go...
Smithman is where it is.
It would go to a bid process, and you could accept what you bid, I mean, with your research, I mean, have more control than you do.
And this, and, and my stance is that, me as a councilman, we should, we should sell the airport tomorrow. That is not...
That's not what we're...
That, and that is not the stance of the infrastructure community, the state of the law. The stance is, is that you need to explore all avenues to be able to pay for these infrastructure repairs when they come due. So...
The match, the match on the...
The match on the, yes, the match on the, so, your options, you're limited to three options, sell the airport or whatever assets you have, you issue a bond, or you raise water rates, tax rates, and then you issue a bond settlement. So it is up to the citizens on what we do, but at some point, you're gonna have to fork over millions of dollars at some point to get this city right. And if that's the end goal for everybody, then we have to explore these avenues. But if it's not, and we just wanna live the cross, then we'll just continue doing what we're doing now. But if, this is a citizen's city, this is y'all's community, and everybody should have each and every opportunity, explore options on how the money is paid.
And all they're, if I understand it right, all they're asking for right now is to, for us to be able to explore legally, can we get this restriction removed, should we need or want to sell the airport at some point?
That's correct. Like, cause I think that there's been a lot of confusion in this information about...
It has nothing to do with the, we're selling the airport.
And I'm not at all qualified to, to read or dissect that, the current deed, and I'm not sure that a lot of people in this room can. Um, so I think that it's just, it's, we, this committee was charged with going out and finding avenues to present to the council, this is one avenue. Um, and, and so getting clarification about what, how that deed is read, bringing that opinion back, and then offering options on how to best utilize, go about, you know, what the process is to go about...
This is what I have to deal with.
Moving it back to, to control for the city of Valley Mills, rather than the interim.
You want me to show you what you sent back, this idiot?
Further discussion of questions? Uh, I've got a motion I'd like to make, if y'all would hear me out. Uh, regarding the airport, uh, I make a motion that representatives of the committee with the assistance of the city attorney, the mayor, and myself, and other committees, as the other committees determine, be authorized and directed to pursue a waiver for release of the restricted, restricted use covenants contained in the deed to the airport property. Uh, and I have a second motion, uh... Uh, and I have a second motion regarding the bond issue. Um, I made a motion that the council appoints a bond campaign advisory committee consisting of at least seven, but not more than ten members, one of which shall be the destiny of the infrastructure advisory committee, and with the advisory members consisting of the mayor and at least one, but not more than two council members, and that the committee be responsible for making recommendations on bond counsel, financial advisor, and underwriter, and for the planning and conducting of a bond campaign consisting of two members.
Could you repeat your first motion?
Yeah. So, uh, the first motion is, uh, that representatives of the committee, with the assistance of the city attorney, the mayor, and myself, and others, as the committee determines, be authorized and directed to pursue a waiver for release of the restrict, restricted, restricted use covenants contained in the deed to the airport property.
And then the second was for the bond advisory committee?
For the bond committee. So, that all the answers, there's answers for the community moving forward for, I know for all the second.
That one's out of the camera.
So, with the, the audit, I mean, isn't that taking the first step of the, uh, recommendations of the advisory committee?
That's the first step.
So, I would say that we need to explore that option first. Because that would have the list. Um, repercussions, if you will, on, uh, tax rates and everything.
So, no motion on, uh, my first motion for restrictions on the land, and no motion on advisory committee for bond? Second?
Everybody on the infrastructure committee, I would just like to thank you all for the hard work, you know, all the hours which I've put in there trying to make this city better. Uh, and just apologize to you on my part.
I mean, that's not saying that we're not looking forward. They didn't, they didn't take it off the table. You know, we're just saying that we're taking your first recommendation.
All we wanted to do was explore options, we wouldn't even have explored options.
So, with that motion, it didn't even take into consideration the first option that we've established on, um-
Uh, next item on your agenda?
Item G, or F.
H, discuss review and possible action on sewer line access to properties at 504 Avenue E and 502 South Sixth Street.
That's behind the T one.
We just want to come to the city council in February. I bought a property and just right behind the, uh, city park, behind the train depot and the deuce back there, people house, located up really well. Um, in the process of doing that, was trying to locate the sewer line. I'm on a house that, other than personally, if you had a plate type line, that kind of caused some problems, and so we were trying to locate that. And Christie owns a lot right next to it, so mine is closer to fifth. Well, mine's right in the middle, and then I own a lot, which is on the fifth street side, she's on the sixth street side. Um, she's torn down the house up along her property. In the process of kind of trying to locate the sewer line and to see where it goes, because we were kind of very new to places, and we're so older, they might have a community line. Um, it turns out there is not a community line between them, and mine goes to a subject tank that supposedly was put in the nineteen twenties, that is right by the creek. It's like maybe ten feet from the edge of the creek bend, and most of my properties in the last year. So, when the city inspector came out, you know, found out that it was a subject tank and not a line, then the city inspector came out and said that the subject tank was unacceptable as far as food, and it would have to be brought up to like a twenty-eight degree, you know. However, I don't know that we can even get a permit to put another subject tank on there because, um, standards as far as subject tanks, you know, in current days sometimes are, I mean, I'm not surprised if my town's one of them. So, his recommendation was sometimes the city council about putting a sewer line to kind of go down, fifth street is downhill, sixth street is uphill, and to put in a sewer line so that people can walk. Not sure exactly how much information I need, but I do have an idea, do you like?
So, it needs to flow from your line down to hers?
My line actually can tie into the sewer, yeah, but it may be a real deep dive.
Michael thinks it's better just to let me tap in to her. It would be like-
Like, put it on the corner of our property, so that we can tap into it.
It would be more like a line running from a house to the city. It's not a main line. It's whatever pipe that Michael said that was already existing here that he had, that he could use. He had like three hundred feet of it.
Yeah, three hundred feet of six inch pipe. And they were attacking that fifth, but the line at fifth is on the opposite end of the road, and they were, uh, through all of fifth, uh, the, the, all that line. Uh, so, there would be access.
Just for clarification, mine can tie into sixth already, already had access, but we don't, we don't know if they, Michael didn't know where it is. So, this is the alley, there's the depot. This was a Ms. Akers' old place. This is where Rick Henderson lives, and this was Julia Raver's place. This is the lot I bought through the church and house down. So, I always tie it like we're here. He's talking about putting a line right here, letting it that way.
Nick was saying it was across the road.
You gotta go on your fifth, but this is all uphill.
Yeah, but it's uphill.
But this one was originally tied in over here, but Michael can't find it. He said there's no reason to try to run it back up that way. If you can tie in at the back of Stacy's and just run a boat. He doesn't know where this one is either, that runs to the depot. We thought it might be a trunk line.
And we know that there is one there. Well, I shouldn't say I know that, but I've heard from, you know, some of you who's been in the city for a long time, that there's probably a trunk there, but they still kind of suspect that it's probably only, you know, it's like three inches or six inches. That's just conjecture. Not conjecture.
Do we have a wand that you, you know, put, uh, flush it down the, the drain, and you kind of wand it to see where the depot runs?
Uh, without, that's, I don't know.
Because that, that might be, like what she was saying, tie into the depot.
That's what we're, yeah.
But they have, they have a thing where you can hook down, because it's a pipe, and with a wand, that way you can locate.
Call it a bridge.
Yeah, but it, that-
No, I have one.
You have one?
I have one.
But does it do sewer lines? I know about more.
It's thirty-five hundred dollars. It does sewer lines and gas lines, electric lines, and everything.
There you go. Where you been?
Yeah.
Come on, Chris.
I mean, I have limitations.
She's just been, I'm sorry, she's just been on this project for a while, and that's-
And to be honest, I've been in the building for a while because I'm scared to death that I'm going to have to, so I don't want to build a great house that has to, until the river's going to the creek.
I make a motion to, uh, allow access. That's my key locator. To 504 Avenue E and, uh, 502 South Sixth Street, to sewer and water lines, you need both?
Uh, I think I have water lines going there, but I've not turned on city service before, you know, because of the climate status of the house, but there's a water.
Water line is right there by that, uh-
Okay, so I'll change it to just sewer line?
There's a meter in a box right there.
Yeah, there's a meter in front of the house.
Yeah, water line is coming from, uh-
And Michael's trying to put my meter back in.
Michael was saying that it may need to be contracted out, uh, for the long run, expedited, so maybe the water leak, they're not stopping, you know, the fifth, so, stop the water leak, so, as we contract it, whether we go to the depot or we go to the-
Yeah, yeah. Explore, you know, with the-
So, you move options, and we can tie into depot a lot quicker and simpler.
Yeah. I think we had that contractor to identify that line and locate it.
Did three bids?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, retracting our motion, you take it away.
You guys, just fine. Yes.
What?
She asked if you retracted your, your motion.
Did I retract it?
You did.
Okay. I'm still retracting it. Go ahead, Sam. Take it on. Take it on, Sammy.
Make a motion that, uh, we allow sewer line access to property 504 Avenue E and 502 South Sixth Street, that we obtain three bids from a contractor to explore the two different options of running the sewer line, one to the depot and one to, well, the north side of fifth? To the sewer line on Fifth Street. I'm with that.
With sewer line fifth and so, and sewer line sixth?
Yes, ma'am. With the contractor to provide, all right.
Three minutes for sewer line two, two, three.
And/or Fifth Street. Yeah.
I'll second that.
Paul Merrill? Pass it to Paul Merrill.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. I just want to say I appreciate it, because on multiple occasions from different things I've called, a couple of you guys, and I really appreciate if y'all show up.
Okay, thanks.
Here's page sixteen, and council will adjourn to executive session for personnel management to conduct an executive session as authorized by Texas government code section five thousand one, that's here in support of age and delivery, the enforcement and guidance of chief of projects.
Play the paper.
I missed the, oh, here it is.
Long as I didn't get it right in time, man.
I did.
Hang on.
Was, was there any attachments or documents on the executive session?
The only thing I'll, the recording, the way the recorder's in it.
Oh, okay.
First property, uh, why we sit at that, I remember, I remember, uh, we can't, 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 uh,
I mean, it's a big shot to be in this conference. We're just trying to figure this out. It's on the bill, a lot of these thinking contests with the torch. We're not having any of those. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. I don't know. I think that's what we have to do. Right now, if there's nothing else, you know, it's not going to go over. Okay. What is that? I mean, it's a big problem. I don't know. What is that? I don't know. 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 Yeah.
This is my life, big girl. She got it, she go down, 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 down. We're gonna roll with you. Yeah. And um, it was like, I'm reading, and they outlasted me. And um, somebody, I think that went at that chorus board, then I went to, yeah. I think the chorus board, we made here, for all this long, I mean, I don't know. And then, we were working, we were working, whatever you call, uh, I don't know, or something, we can't. Hold this number up, and just call them. Um, he says, for her, or what? Yeah.
I didn't know if I heard that. Like I said, we were like-minded. We're like-minded. Oh yeah. Yes. But there was good arguments. Oh yeah. They're like nothing. Right? See, everyone said that we had our talk. And they would have it for us. We voted it. People said people said yes, and we put it out. Or no. Yeah? It's almost an hour.
We just feel so.
I didn't know if I heard that. Yeah. Cars and that was like. No, absolutely. Yeah. They really did. She did run it down. I think it's like a different background. On accident. Yeah. Yeah, man. When they were quick though. I walked in, I was walking in there. And I was immediately like. She was almost very excited. That's what I was doing. Okay, now we can talk. Yeah. Young and sports are pretty happy to some level of kids. Yeah. Yeah, and broken. Doors and all the doors. Oh, all even. But yeah. Like. So I guess like. And I had to get my rocks on. And I love saying. And I ever had to dress up. And I have to wreck me. Yeah. Well, so when I looked down by you. I wrote, I see there's a house home. So when I look and I just turn down and down. So I'm like, I don't want to get up here. And she wants. She's telling me everyone that Nancy Pelosi. She was like, oh, no, he doesn't, he's not anymore. I mean, it's like. Yeah. So yeah, the best job that we're taking on is that one. He has one of them. So one is, yes. I mean, get up and. He was with this, with the call. And I was calling with this. So I was talking this can be. So maybe that's a definitely. Yeah, that's part of it. And so I called guys. And then I have to hear this conversation. I know what you thought. And all the. For everyone that asked. Yeah, this year. And we were talking about. Uh, uh, it's true. He's the new Hitler. I mean, he's up there. You guys understand? For sure. That mean it was like. The whole is fortuitously. I think it's actually a good time. Really present. They're present. Probably present. Yes, should be here. Very. Yes. He's one of the wrongest. Those like single nations that were at once. No, they're. Don't say what you give it to you. Yes. That's all I get today. And that's like. I saw him yesterday. On the right hand side.
We call the board. Down the block.
I was like, hey. He was home. I can just look for kids.
Hey, baby, cheers.
He might as well be married. Then that's where I was like, we need to like. Too many words. Too many words. But color is just too many words in them. Actually. That's all right. They're like, ah, so it's another year. Or whatever. Or the three seven. Yeah. At work. No, essentially like. Hours and down. Down the radio, all that takes over. It's a lot. Oh, it is a lot. The dogs are great. They more for a race. Yeah. Yeah, it's like. Yeah. More lighting. I heard you say that. This person agenda. Anything? Yeah. Thanks. Thanks. Right, like, a lot of work, honestly, that was, that has been about, you know, there are, there are, yeah. So, not even, yeah, that had to be done with or without. Yeah, we did. Oh, it was, that's why I almost quit right there. Even the long camp, I think, I probably wanted to explore it. That's what, that's what I was talking about, just to get it. But like, I feel like this is, I don't know, I almost wonder if we can say, hey, guys, this, this is the thing you're telling me. Yeah, like, this only, this is gonna expose you down. That's it, that's the only thing that we're asking you to do. Exactly, exactly, either way, it's a benefit. They didn't read their name, that's what I said. That's what I hate about it. I heard, I heard. Too many words, too many words, stop. But it was pretty, like, all of them. So, you heard, they contracted that market so long. Oh, we're making the cheese with shrimp. Two, eight. That's how that, yeah. Altamont. My son is over there. They get their little hoodie bags, their finals again. Put in scholarships, whatever, five million. Yeah, right, hotel game, I'm glad they support her. Yeah, I'm going to the candy city because, uh, my girlfriend's not, she could play some games for me. Everyone's like, that's a hotel game, it's for me. Like, you know, he's probably an hour away from coming. I can give those, like, sex, like, well. No, I, it's not the all, that was, that was the best thing. They brought a lot of ready.
It's nine fifty-three, ready to convene, ready to session, discuss review and take off of action on executive decision. Deliberation regarding TLGC 551, point of view, seven-four, personnel matters.
Thank you, most, no, thank you.
All in favor? Do you have any motion? They accept? All in favor?